What it does is dominates all that tissue.
Yeah.
They said eight months till they get it back.
And I saw the guy today, my TV. They say they have one, but they have to test it.
Can't give it to people that don't have it. They don't know what it does. A lot of squirmish people about coming to, you know, service to their son. It's mostly the overseas stuff, the people that can drive are still coming.
Yeah. We can start now, Maria's here. Good morning and welcome to the Tyler County Planning Commission meeting for March 11th, 2020. And we'll start at this time with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
Ali?
Here.
Here. Okay, at this time, we'll have a public comment. Members of public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state laws, matters presented in this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for Planning Commission consideration. So that all interested parties may have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited time by the chairperson, that's me. At all times, please the microphone and state your name and address for the record. We are recording this, so if anyone who'd like to come comment on any item not on the agenda. Seeing I will close the public comment, I will go to the approval of minutes, item three.
I wonder, on five C, there's just a typo, a small typo on the, under the special use permit for the Elderwood property, and it said, you know, ending time from 11:00 PM to 10:00 AM. I think he meant 10:00 PM there.
Okay, so we have that correction, you want to make that motion, John, please?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Roll call. Motion passed. I guess we really don't need to do a roll call anymore, we don't have to, we do need to do a verbal, or? Push the button. Okay. It was passed, six yes, and we had one absent, so. Okay, moving right along. We'll go to four A. A change of zone. PZC 20-001. And it's a categorical exemption. A proposed change of zone from AE20, exclusive agriculture, a 20-acre minimum to C3 commercial on a 3.5-acre portion of 9.88 acres. Site is located on the west side of Road 68 and Avenue 424 alignment, approximately .4, 4, 5 miles west of Dinuba Urban Development Boundary. And at this point, I will open a public hearing, we'll start with April Hill, our staff person's presentation.
Thank you and good morning Chairman Whitlatch and Commissioners. I'm April Hill, Planner Three, Resource Management Agency Economic Development and Planning Branch. As Chairman Whitlatch outlined, the change of zone is from the AE20 to the C3 Service Commercial Zone on a three-and-a-half acre portion of a 9.88 acre parcel with plans to establish a mini-mart and gas station. The applicants are Martin and Maria Orozco. The site is located outside in the urban boundary and is subject to the RVLP, the Rural Valley Lands Plan. Here's an aerial of the site. Surroundings have, there's some businesses to the north, there's some small house, uh, home sites to the, to the east, mostly ag, there's an old sand and gravel pit immediately to the east. RBT.
April, how old is sand and gravel pit, there's no reclamation project for that?
I don't have the history on the site, but it looks pretty, it does, it's surrounded, it has houses around it, so it's a... Dinuba Housing, one and a half miles away, and Reedley Housing, about the same distance. Our Rural Valley Lands Plan analysis was prepared to determine the agricultural viability of the site, and staff concluded that the parcel would receive 14 points and is in the gray area where no clear-cut decision is readily apparent. Project is based on an economic development proposal that has gone through the project review committee. The subject property is only nine acres, but was placed in the AE20 zone by the 1978 rezoning of the county, similar to surrounding development. The parcel itself was created by a 1907 subdivision and lot lines were adjusted in 2005. Project is not in the Williamson Act, is not inharmonious with the surroundings. Staff considered that only a three-acre portion should be rezoned to allow consistency with the spirit of the general plan in order to retain the remainder in agriculture. If amenable, the, this zone change could be reclassified to the less intense C2 general commercial. Site contains agriculture, scattered rural residences. The trips for a, for Road 64 south of Avenue 424 was measured at 2,000, 2,900, and to the north of 424 is 6,400. Allway stop was installed in May 2016 at the T intersection of Road 64 and Avenue 424. We approved local mini-marts and gas stations with similar average annual daily trips on, one on Road 80 at Avenue 384, which had about 6,900 trips, and another through a zone change in, near Jones Corner on Road 108 at Avenue 152 with 1,500, 1,500 ADT. Here's a site, proposed site plan. The applicant proposes having a mini-mart just south of Buttonwell O'Ditch. They have been talking with the Alta Irrigation District staff to determine what setbacks they'd need to protect the ditch. Service commercial or a less intense zone such as neighborhood commercial, C1, or general commercial, C2, which also, would also allow a gasoline filling station or grocery store. The applicants live in the central portion of this, of the nine-acre site. They had kiwi vines on most of it, but those vines were not producing. Public notice for the project was mailed to surrounding property owners within 300 feet, also published in the Woodhill Gazette with a 10-day public comment period. We did receive comments last week from the property owner to the north, who has a ranch up there, Mr. Crinklaw. I sent him the site plan, have not heard back from him. Also received comments this week concerned about sales of liquor in a mini-mart on that site. This ends staff's report.
So before I open the public testimony, I want to see if my fellow commissioners have any questions for April before she sits down. We'll talk to her after we hear the public testimony. So anybody have any questions, Maria?
I might, I, I'm...
You want to save it for?
I want to save it, yes.
Okay, anybody else?
I also noticed we have somebody in the audience who may speak, but I'll ask him questions later if we need to.
Okay.
April, does Avenue 424 stop there at the intersection? So all we got is the ditch?
Yes.
What it looks like.
First, I'm going to ask setback questions and all that, so, we'll get to that.
We'll open the public testimony, and those who are in favor of the project, we'd like to have you come first, if you would. Anybody like to testify in favor of the project? Anybody who's opposed to the project would like to come forward and testify? Please give your name and address for the, the record, please.
Jeff Norrigian.
All, all the way up to the microphone. You're being recorded.
My name's Jeff Norrigian.
Address?
42342, Road 62.
And you live close by, or?
Directly behind.
Okay, thank you.
So I have just a lot of questions, because I don't know what the details of this is. Are they going to be selling gas and diesel? Is there going to be?
Address me, so...
Oh, I'm sorry.
They'll make a list and they'll answer each one of them, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
So I just want to know, is it gas, or diesel, or both? How many pumps? Will they sell alcohol? Estimated foot traffic, estimated vehicle traffic, including semi-trucks? Will there be turning lanes? Will they be selling hot food? What will be done to prevent loitering? Will there be food trucks or roadside stands? Fuel tanks, how many and what sizes, above or below ground? Anticipated community benefit? Paid a community change? Anticipated community detriment? Will there be automotive services? Any other hazardous materials on site? How many employees? Hours of operation? Square foot of main building? Area of parking lot footprint? Sinage size and height? How far back from the road? And there are three other existing gas station mini-marts within a fair travel. One is 1.4 miles away, one is two miles away, and one is 2.14 miles away. And being within 40, or just outside the city of Dinuba's urban development boundary of .4, 5 miles, I'm just, my concern is that boundary was established for reason, and things like this should be in town, not out in the country. So, that's all.
Don't go, we're going to have somebody answer those.
Okay.
April, or Aaron?
Well, to the chair, this is a rezone, not a site. But as far as the, the use, you know, ADT?
Is and of that, what is the maximum use of a site like this? April could also give us whatever we put in there for trip generation. But regardless, this was a simple rezone, so there's a lot of questions here that would not necessarily be answered by the rezoning process itself, more of a side-plan question, but that's not, that's not in front of us right now.
So basically, if we vote to change the zoning, they will be entitled by law to build that, but they can't just build anything, they have to meet the standards set by the county, and I'll let April address that more directly, but, so maybe you have one more opportunity, okay?
Yes.
April?
Yes, the zone change, the proposed zone change would allow a lot of things, the C3 would allow a, a service, super-service station that would allow diesel as well as gas, gasoline. It could include a truck repairs, auto repairing, bakeries, or mini warehouses, is what would be, what could be allowed in the C3 service commercial. A C3 zone also allows uses in the C2 zone and the C1 zone, general commercial and neighborhood commercial. Could have an automated car wash, fast food restaurant. The applicant could choose to get, place retail stores or businesses that don't involve manufacturing. Could have a nursery, could have a variety store, a neighborhood, if it were rezoned to the neighborhood commercial, C1 zone. They could also have a gasoline filling station excluding the super-service station, which is the repairs. They could have a grocery store, they could put in a liquor store or a dairy product store. The applicant would be able to develop the property to the, with any of the uses that are allowed in those zones.
As far as the trips, we did go as far as to project what, what could be, be out there, and there generally 12 fueling stations, it would be about 162, so that's 80 in, 80 out, and 10 evening peak trips. So, and I'm sorry, that's average week, yeah, weekday. So it's morning and evening, and then as far as the setbacks, there's a 50-foot centerline setback, and then the C2 zone itself setback, is that 10? I believe it's 10 feet, 10 feet.
Yeah.
From the property line.
Yes.
So I'm sure we didn't answer everything, but we're going to talk about it much more after I close the public testimony, so, but thank you, so we're listening, okay?
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to come forward and testify at this time?
Good morning, my name's Bob Crinklaw, I'm the property owner just north of this proposed site. All along the ditch there that runs from Buttonwell through to Road 62. I have considerable concerns, not only from an agricultural point of view, but also have a rental unit right down at the corner there, at the, it'd be the west end of the proposed site, right across the canal from it, just on the north side. That's of concern to me, it's a, I have young families in there. The other thing is, is I, and some of the questions have already been answered for me, I appreciate that. For, for example, what C3 includes, because I am concerned about what else could be built across the, right adjacent to my property. I, I'm all for free enterprise, but I also concerned about agriculture, and every acre that we lose in agriculture, as you know, we're probably going to get that food source from some other country. So I am concerned that we continue to lose agriculture property. I have a question as to why all 660 feet of that property would be required for this proposed service station? That means that there's a large, if you put the map back up of the proposed site, yeah, from approximately halfway where the building is back, another 330 feet would be removed and put in the commercial zone also. I would like to see that kept from that building forward, and I would not have particular concern then, because that would protect my rental unit, and it would also preserve approximately another acre or so of agricultural farmland.
Well, is your rental house, it's on that northwest corner, on the other side of the ditch?
Yes.
Is there a bridge or something?
Wait a minute, nor, north.
Northeast, northeast.
I was thinking northwest, but...
Oh, I'm sorry, say the question again, please.
Well, I'm trying to figure, I thought your property is on, is next to the ditch?
Yes.
Am I looking at the wrong corner, right there?
No, my property's on the north side of the ditch, running from Buttonwell to Road 62.
So how do the people with that ditch there get, is there a road, that's all ditch, right, or is there a road also?
No, that's all ditch. There's ditch roads on each side for ditch access people, but there's no, no paved road between the two, between Road 62 and 64.
So how do people get back to, they have to go back to Road 62?
Yes, they go up 62 and, and come in my long driveway to, to my residence, and then to the mobile home, which is just south of there.
So you own both parcels then?
Pardon?
You own both parcels? You own the L-shaped parcel and the...
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
15, approximately 15 acres. There's a five-acre parcel in the front there.
Okay.
Those are, those are my two primary concerns. The one is, you know, we're in agriculture, we do have to protect our crops, we have to spray, we have to fertilizer, we have to do all the things that are required to get a crop, and I have no idea what's going to wind up across the canal from us, and eventually you could shut me down from doing any of those activities because of hazard to other people adjacent to it. He could presumably put in a truck parking lot behind that area. That means in the summertime, those big diesels would be sitting out there idling all night long, keep their, keep themselves cool. I have a residence right straight across the canal from that, very close to it. Could be light pollution because of having to light the area. I can see all kinds of things that could create a, a problem there, make it difficult for us to continue to provide our activity, our farm, uh, activity.
Farm that L-shaped?
Yes, yes.
What, what do you farm?
Grapes.
Pardon?
Grapes, grapes, right, at present, yeah. Has been tree fruit in the past, but it's all grapes, right, at the present time.
And then the northeast little parcel, that's the housing that you have there?
I'm sorry.
The, the northeast corner of 62, Buttonwell, that's where you have the housing, the rental, is that right? Right there.
No, it's at the, on my property, it would be the southwest.
029, ending in 029. That's his house, I think. That's housing, right? That's his house, but the other house is on the...
The, the...
Rental there?
The rental unit's right on the canal, right at the edge of the canal, in that corner, at the corner. My home is north, yes.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I think...
Those are my two primary concerns, agriculture and, you know, what could be built there.
One question, you mentioned the welfare of the people there, how would this affect them as far as their welfare?
Well, as I mentioned, in, for example, if you make, depends on what they put across from there. You know, if they don't do anything with it, it wouldn't probably bother them at all. They could continue to enjoy the lifestyle they, they wanted when they rented the property, which was strictly agriculture. The other thing is, is the, who knows what they'll put there, you know? It could be just nothing but a parking lot with light pollution that would be a problem. Could be the sound of diesel trucks going in and out, excuse me, all night long. I, I, you know, and I, but I have no idea what they're going to use that back half for. This is why I say I could live with the fact that he has a service station, but why not keep it back to where his building is and let the, the other half, the other 330 feet roughly, 300 feet, remain in agriculture? Those are my, my questions, concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mark Lemus with Alta Irrigation District at 289 North Island, Dinuba. Just to be clear, Alta Irrigation District, yep.
Who heads it now, he used to be on our board.
Oh, yeah, Chad Wegley's the general manager now.
Chris, but Chris is retired then?
He retired, yes.
Okay.
We have the ditch running along there, and then one thing in the staff report, that old sand and gravel pit is actually owned by us, and it's a ponding basin that we use to recharge water, which is ever more important with Sigma now. But we just, we've sent two comment letters, we want to make sure the developer, you know, we're not in favor or against this, we're neutral on the zone change, but make sure that the developer understands that that ditch, as per our policy, because of public safety, will have to be piped at their expense, and I'm not too sure that they understand what that expense involves. And I encourage them to work with our staff in, in the very beginning of their planning process, so that we can go over that with them. I know there are some people in the audience that have had to work with our staff on piping projects that can attest to that, it is not a cheap thing, so they need to understand that, what's going to happen. So that, that ditch will have to be taken out and put into concrete pipe because of the public safety.
Say that again?
Ditch?
I couldn't, I couldn't hear. What did you say?
Will have to be enclosed in concrete pipe and taken out because of public safety.
Got it.
Yep. Thank you.
At, at, at this property owner's expense?
Yes. At the developer's expense.
See if that works?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Yeah, you have new testimony?
Can I just ask a question to that?
Us. Answer it for you via our staff. Come up with the microphone, give your name and address.
So, I'm Jeff Norrigian again, on that piping, this is just more of a curiosity. Is that for safety as far as drowning, or environmental safety?
Don't know. Well, the, through the chair, it's generally for personal safety.
It'll be a drowning issue then?
Yes.
Would that be the whole length of the 660, or how far would they have to go back?
Yes, that whole, whole way, if they require it, then yes.
Do fencing?
It's up to the irrigation district as far as the requirements that they have.
And they just said pipe, so...
And then the other things I just wanted to add to, I guess my opposition to it is I farm, and we do quite a bit of commercial work for other growers as well. So we're, I'm around the countryside quite a bit. And I have customers that have ranches that are neighboring to or surrounding country gas stations and stores, and typically, they cannot leave things out overnight. I have one in particular, his loading yard, we do his trucking. His loading yard is about a quarter mile from a store on Conejo and McCall in Fresno County. And every night, all the tractors, the forklifts, they all have to be moved, because in the after-work hours, there's lots of loitering and drinking behind the store, and they wander over to his yard and they steal the batteries and things like that out of the tractors, and so those are my bigger concerns, is the not actually having it, a gas station on 64. It's just what comes along with that? And a gas station in town, typically, the problems aren't there because you've got city police frequently driving by, and there's a lot more, I guess you could say, eyes on things, and out in the country, you might see a sheriff drive by once or twice a day. So there's just a typical more riffraff and loitering and trash and things like that that get left behind in a country store versus a city store. And I, I just feel this particular type of business is suited for town, not for the country, because of the, the change in the amount of people and the activities that go along with that store. That's, that's my biggest concern. Being, you know, I operate my farm directly east of it, our shop's there, all of our equipment's parked there. In fact, our equipment parks directly back to the back of that west boundary where he's proposing to, to have the, the end of his store. So, so all that's visible to people to come and peruse and take what they feel. So that's, just wanted to add that to, to my comment.
We heard you, okay? We heard you, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, is there's no further, yes, you want to say something, anything new, okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Sandra Stats, one-three-eight-three-seven South Zedeker, Kingsburg, California. I won't, I won't say the same thing, though I would like to make a comment in regards to a comment stated that it was not the site plan review and it was a simple zone change. Zone change is not simple. If you approve this, that'll allow that use, which is one of your largest use and global allowances on C-three. I realize there's a consideration of dropping it, but you're still giving them the entitlement to move forward. And I want you to consider that and everything, everything that's been said today. Thank you.
I understand that, but thank you for your comment. Is there any other? Okay.
My name is Scott Harness, six-fifty-three North Hayes, Dinuba, former mayor of Dinuba. And just a couple of points I'm not for or against the project, but I also did work in the convenience store industry for all of my life, from family to corporate that ran fifty-two, a chain of fifty-two stations. And what the gentleman in the audience had stated is there is quite a bit of activity that comes with these businesses and who, the impact it will have on your public safety. And if the county is able to service that. And really recently, in the last four years, I guess, since the Assembly Bill's one-oh-nine, Prop forty-seven, Prop fifty-seven, where it's a lot easier to steal from convenience stores. I can see, just like the city of Dinuba has a police officer at Walmart nearly all day, every day, you will have that, you could possibly have that impact out here. It's also a, I can't remember what it's called, Maria, if it's Reedley Highway or what we call that shortcut to, from Dinuba to Reedley. And if perhaps you could, I don't know if you can put conditions on the developer for widening the road or improvements to that road, because as you get further into Dinuba, you've got the narrow bridge and you have a rail crossing that we've already, the city worked with the county on, that is a, that wreaks havoc on that area because the train will stop for, I want to say hours at a time, and traffic flow stops. There is a Sinclair that is coming into town on the corner, northeast corner of Avenue four-sixteen and Road seventy, Inglehart, Road seventy-two in Dinuba as well. And so that was just a little bit of information I wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask questions?
No, no, you can. Go ahead.
So, given your experience in the area and, you know, from business standpoint and your past experience at the city, I wanted to ask, and I'm glad you got up because I was going to ask you anyway, what kind of impact would this have on the area business-wise?
There is, I don't see the business around it that will be impacted. I'm sure there's going to be a convenience store to the north and south that's going to protest it, but if you rezone it, then it's their right to build whatever they want. I guess the other concern would be the precedent that is set with the rezone and the value that will go up. As a Realtor, ag land is very valuable, but now with a convenience store, you might have neighbors who want to jump in on that. And I don't know how you will stop that once you rezone one. The other thing I did, was going to bring up, as a Realtor, I struggle with the ordinance passed by the Board of Supervisors that a section cannot be cut out of a piece of property that's no less than forty acres. And I would, curious how this one's able to chop off three acres from a ten. I've had folks that own twenty acres and they can sell the twenty real easy of citrus, but nobody, the big farmers don't really want the home. And so they've come to me and asked how to split off an acre to sell the home separately. And I have not been able to find a way to do that for folks. And if there is a way, then, you know, maybe, maybe I could find out from staff later on how that, how that works. But no impact, Mr. McElroy, not a negative impact on business. It is an impact if there was housing around it. You're too far away from Viscaia, Dinuba. But, yeah, I, you know, I worked in a C-store seven days a week and we, it tends to be a beacon for, for trouble at times. You can buy alcohol at Rite-Aids and Walmarts, but our industry just sometimes has a bad rap. And, and like I said, with the new laws, you can watch the news every night and then someone's just busting through the windows, stealing what they can. Armed robberies have gone up. And so I love the industry. I, I do. I just wanted to share that bit of information. So, thank you.
Thank you. I said no, but that's not Maria's necessary. Pardon? No. We've heard from everybody, but the owner doesn't appear to be here. Anyway, what I'm going to do is I'm going to close the public testimony and go to staff recommendation, and then we will discuss it.
Well, through the chair to answer some of the, the questions that have arisen on page three of ten of the staff report, or page nineteen to you, it does talk about the development standards table, rear yard fifteen feet, side yards none if not adjacent to the R-zone, et cetera, height thirty-five foot limits. So all those standards are in there for you to review. The, as far as how we look at a rezone in the RVLP, if we have an application, we are duty-bound to bring it forward for your review and to do an RVLP analysis. So that analysis in and of itself does answer a lot of these questions as far as how harmonious is it with the surrounding neighbors? Because it's commercial, if it was commercial or industrial, because the surrounding uses are farming, it's, it's more harmonious. If this was a residential project, because the surrounding uses are farming, it might be less harmonious. And that's how, how we look at it. It's not a very actively farmed piece of property. And to answer the question as to how you parcel off three acres, they're not parceled off. It's just what you'd call split zoning. So we're just rezoning those three acres. And that we thought would be a little bit more amenable to you yourselves than trying to rezone the, the whole property. The property in and of itself does not meet the minimum acreages for use permits or any other type of use. So, I mean, to relegate someone to have to farm the rest of their careers on a less than ten-acre piece of property is a little bit, a little bit harder to do, especially when there is a potential economic development opportunity. We did go through the daily trips that pass by the site, which are quite, quite a few. So obviously, the owner of the property sees that opportunity. So that's why they, they brought this project forward. When we did the PZI process from other Board of Supervisors, they obviously allowed us to bring this forward to you because they, they also agreed that there was an economic development opportunity here. And again, to, to limit someone, to force them to farm on nine acres, didn't seem reasonable. The last thing I would potentially propose to this planning commission is that there was potential, I believe, that we could create some standards for this project. We don't really have the right to do so in and of itself, but if the applicant was willing to enter into an agreement, a development agreement with the county, we can actually put conditions on the project. We're not supposed to condition zoning, but we could, through a development agreement, actually condition this project, if that is the, the planning commission's choice to do so.
What is the reason for the C-three versus, say, C-one? If that is a, a big difference to the developer?
I, you know, like any developer, ask for the universe and maybe you get the moon. So there, again, they wanted to see, we wanted to see what it would look like, if that changes anything with the RVLP analysis or anything like that. No, no, it doesn't. So that's why the, the comment in the staff, or in the agenda, that they'd be willing to do something less, less intense. So again, if that's the, as you can see, as far as the development standards and what's allowed in the C-one zone, it is less intense, or the C-two zone. But the, again, they're just asking, asking for the best, most intense commercial zone that they could get.
Aaron, so if today we are approving this, or not approving, whatever that case may be, the next step would be for them to come with a site plan and then show, show us what they're looking to do? Or they...
Through the chair, there is no design review for Tulare County. So as far as the site plan, next step would be to come in for building permits. So you, you wouldn't see this again. Again, if we were to continue this and look to negotiate conditions, that is possible through a development agreement. The applicant's not here today to answer yes or no to that question. So I would suggest continuing it to, to see if they, they can work towards conditions that might help the neighbors. Again, a rezone as legislative act, we have absolute police power to do it. It fits the RVLP score, so we're almost supposed to do it. But the fact is, there are neighbors' concerns here and in lieu of trying to put conditions on a zone right now, I'd be more comfortable doing a development agreement with conditions in there. And we've done this before, if you remember back to Griggs, Lemon Cove. We put conditions on, on that project outside, with the Farm Bureau, outside of, outside of these chambers to make sure that everybody was okay with that. And that was the O-zone, which also had, you can do anything in. So that would be one aspect, one way to help this project move forward.
So from Maria, you understand that once we change the zone by law, whatever it is they could do there, they're entitled and we never see it again. And so I think what Aaron's suggesting is we bring it back and look at perhaps putting some conditions so we have a little better control on what happens there. And maybe the neighbors will feel a little more comfortable.
I, I'm thinking that might be a good idea because to bring it back, because my concern is, you know, sharing some of the concerns expressed by neighbors and by others in the audience is that, you know, and that's why I was concerned about seeing a site plan, because you have houses on three sides and I wouldn't want, you know, light shining in my bedroom window. So I'd be concerned about stuff like that.
Well, right. And the, and this would be the way, way to do that, to actually get some of our use permit conditions on to the project would be through an agreement with the...
So at this time, so do I... What am I going to say? Do I close the public testimony and then we go to making a motion?
I thought you closed it.
The public testimony.
Public, okay. I did close the public hearing, okay. I thought I closed the public comment. Pardon?
You close the public testimony, you're discussing the matter, and then you're open for motions.
Okay, then we're open for a motion, Maria.
So I, Aaron, correct me if I need to say this different, but I'm making a motion to postpone to a date uncertain?
To a date uncertain.
Okay, so I'm making a motion to postpone to a date uncertain.
I'll second.
Waiting, waiting. Motion carried. Okay, so there will be no notice on this?
There will be.
Oh, there will be new notice, so still call and pay attention. Because a lot of times people go, oh, we didn't get the notice and we can't control the US mail, so... Thank you for coming. Moving right along.
Through the chair, I would like to state for the record that fruition sales has withdrawn their application for special use permit number PSP two-zero-dash-zero-zero-five. And with that, it doesn't require a motion. They've withdrawn the application.
That was easy.
Also, through the chair, I would like to offer anybody in the audience who wants to make any testimony, since we do like to entertain all testimony for projects. If anybody is here to testify us to that use permit, that they are welcome to do so.
Anybody like to testify on this? If not, we'll move on to the director's report.
Through the chair, Aaron Bach, Planning Director Tulare County, Resource Management Agency. We are off to the Planning Directors Conference in Sacramento, starting at one o'clock today and going through Friday. We will hear about vehicle miles traveled. We will hear about resiliency in regards to wildfires, which we just got our application in yesterday to the board so that they are going to let us apply for wildfire resiliency planning, to add that to our, our general plan. We also will be hearing about hemp versus cannabis. And that's, I'm trying to get out of here, make it up to, to hear what the state's saying about that in LA County. We're, we're also going to hear a lot about housing and homelessness. So again, just reading the agenda for the discussion points, I think we are in as good of a place as we can be. We just got our SB two grant monies last, well, got the contract signed by our board last week. So we, we are, we are right there as far as like Prop eighty-four money for resiliency and adaptation, vehicle miles traveled. We got our scope of work nearly completed with VRPA. So I mean, as far as general plan amendments, I think we're, we're right there. And of course, our county is continually trying to address homelessness. We did a general plan element and housing element update to the board last week, and that was required by the state. So I can give you that presentation as well next time, just so you can see what, what I'm talking about in regards to the state mandates and how we're addressing them in our general plan. But I, again, I'm always welcome. And also, hearing Mr. Whitlatch, I'm trying to schedule Denise to, to come talk about water and what we're doing water-wise. There is new studies coming out. CV Salts, Central Valley Salts Program, that's going to increase the water quality standards throughout the valley, and that's going to be a big game changer. But when I was at the, and we could also discuss during that presentation, there was a recent study by economists in regards to Sigma and the effects of Sigma, and it's pretty, it's much more bleak than, than we originally anticipated. So those studies I can make available to you through that presentation if I can get Denise scheduled here shortly. So I'm thinking when we come back next time, we'll try to, try to get both of those on the agenda. Otherwise, I'm going to take off out of here and drive to Sacramento.
And you do a briefing on VMTV when you get back?
Yes, absolutely. We'll give you any of the materials. What's that?
Come visit you?
Yeah, well, we'll do the, the presentation here.
I won't say a word?
We'll, we'll do the presentation here, but your, your concern, Mr. Millies, is in regards to what the cities are going to do.
Are the cities coming to this conference, by the way?
No, this is just the planning directors from the county. But honestly, they have their same equivalent. We also have the California APA Conference. VMT's been heavily discussed over the last seven years. We, as planners, all, all know what it is. But I don't think we anticipated the legislation to move so quickly into actually having to do it by July of this year. You know, especially when it first came out. You know, especially when it first came out, you know, Caltrans was adamant that we didn't want to do it because everything's based on level of service. But over time, because of the AB 32 and greenhouse gases and climate change, I mean, we're all kind of, as planners, getting forced into relooking at the world in a whole new way. So I think there's gonna be a lot of road bumps out there and probably some black eyes and some, some scrapes for developers. But honestly, I think the devil's in the details in your environmental documents. So getting a good consultant to do your VMT study and show the city the way is the way to do it. But, you know, it's, it's kinda like when AB 32 was first coming through as far as greenhouse gas emissions and/or some of the, the flood control legislation back in the day. We, we all seem to have made it through without. But, you know, as far as just making sure that the city knows what it is and getting a good consultant to tell them what it is would probably be the most appropriate way to move. But we'll come back with whatever information we can bring.
You were talking about homelessness, one of the items on the agenda, how to deal with. You know, we had a lot of, in this last campaign, these Board of Supervisor races, was talked about. You know, you don't have a plan, all you do is study it, and then somebody else said, well, I've got a plan. How much of an impact does homelessness, and I'm gonna be, probably a dumb statement, in the county? How much of a homelessness problem is it in the county? Because everything I see is in the incorporated areas of the city. So how's the, what, what, what's this county gonna do to shepherd this thing to some kind of a meaningful solution?
Well, I think the county, through HH.
You don't see homeless people running around out in the county. I don't. With their shopping carts.
Well, even at RMA, we see people walking along the ditches. We've had homeless, homeless, homeless folks out there, none recently actually that I've seen. But the, the fact is that we are coordinating with the cities to a very high degree and looking how we can jointly solve this problem. HHSA's been heavily involved in the process with Supervisor Shacklin. And there's a committee that looks at this and they do have a, a plan. So I mean, it's, it's moving forward. Is it a solution? I don't think anybody's gonna say there's a magic solution out there for, for the problem. But I think the county is doing, and actively trying to get funds to, to really move forward on projects.
There's a lot of discussion about, and I've been following this very closely, about the, the cause and effect. And, and one of the causes is lack of housing and affordable housing. And I don't see it that way and a lot of others don't either, that it's more of a mental health and public safety issue. Housing is important and, you know, there aren't enough. Like I just saw a thing in the Bay Area where there's what you can get for $3,900 a month in Oakland. You get an apartment worth, worth $2,800 in Palo Alto. Whole different story there. And it, it's not because those people can't afford $3,900, it's because they don't know how to live. And, and so there's two different things going on here.
Well, right. And like I said, and there's been several presentations recently at the board in regards to homelessness. And to that point, there is differing reasons for it. And so there's no one solution that's gonna fix it all. But I, I think, but, and I don't know if the state legislature can fix it. I think the solutions are local and it's gonna be nonprofits and it's gonna be Health and Human Services and it's gonna be Board of Supervisors working with city councils to try to, to look to solutions. I mean, this is not the first time in history that homelessness has been a concern. It's always been a concern, but I think it's just become so relevant because of all the homelessness in the, in the bigger cities.
Right. So let's get Aaron out of here. If there's no other comments.
Thank you.
From anyone, we'll adjourn the meeting.
I was gonna say I have 10 questions.
Were you rushing?
Just kidding.
Meeting adjourned. Were you trying to rush me out of here? No, Aaron has to get to a meeting in Sacramento, poor guy.